I would like to advise all those present that notice of this regular meeting of May 15, 2024, has been provided to the public in accordance with the provisions of the Open Public Meeting Act of the State of New Jersey. Notice of time and place of this meeting has been included in the annual notice of meetings, which was posted and filed with the city clerk and with the Jersey Journal and the Star Ledger. An additional notice of time and place was posted and filed with the city clerk and was forwarded to the Jersey Journal and Star Ledger on May 13, 2024. The regular meeting of the municipal council of the city of Bayonne is now in session. Ms. Medina, please call the roll.
Mr. Booker?
Here.
Mr. Carroll?
Here.
Mr. Perez?
Here.
Ms. Weimer?
Here.
Mr. La Palusa?
Here. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Before we get started, I'd like to welcome our Boy Scout from Troop 27, Cosmo St. James. Hi, Cosmo. He's going to be sitting in at the desk and taking a lot of this in from one of his badges. So let's welcome Cosmo. I'd like to read a statement concerning tonight's resolution that was for the Oprah changes, and we'll move that up to the front of the meeting mat on. The biggest change in the resolution was restricting commercial entities from monetizing Oprah requesting information from the municipality and using the information to make money. Under the previous law, if the city uploaded all their information to our website, Oprah requesters could demand hard copies or whatever format they wanted, and it had to be provided to them. Under the new law, the information could be scanned onto the website, and we could provide the link for the requester to view the information anywhere, even privately in their own space. In fact, no request would be needed, making it easier. The change is increase access to public records. And again, let us know which section of the changes you would find objectionable. Let us know what would inhibit your ability to get the information, because we don't see any inhibition of information. So if anybody would like to speak on that, we recognize they're speaking on it now.
Good evening, everyone. Sharon Nadrowski, 126th Avenue A. I was kind of appalled, actually, when I read your support of this. Transparency, I think everyone sitting up there, including myself, when I ran on a ticket that promised transparency. Open, honest government. This resolution or this bill doesn't support open, honest, transparent government. You can spin the one caveat of the bill, if you'd like, to say you're protecting people from big bad business, but there's a lot of other things in there. And I believe your quote in the newspaper was "to not waste city resources on Oprah requests about dog licenses." I think that was your quote, Gary.
It wasn't my quote.
So with that being said...
I didn't give it a vote.
I also think that you want one thing, you're no longer even holding yourself accountable. You know, when you deny people their Oprah requests or don't get it in a timely and fashion, currently, people have to sue you, which happens very frequently in Bayonne. Bayonne has paid a number, a number of fines for that. The law, this new bill, if Governor Murphy caves and signs it, would not allow that anymore. Doesn't hold the municipality. If I want to sue because you didn't provide the information that I'm required to by law, I have to hire a lawyer myself. And now how it stands, if I am vindicated, I am right, and the municipality is found in the wrong, I get to get back my fees and the municipality is responsible for my legal fees. That is taken out. So that discourages people who are illegally being denied the right to public information from violent suit, because it's a financial burden that maybe they can't afford or aren't willing to undertake. Yeah, there's a clause in there. Well, if the municipality feels they should pay it, they can. Come on. I mean, that's disgraceful. You're just making it more difficult. Democracy is founded on transparency and trust. And if you have nothing to hide, then why not provide the information? I honestly don't understand why you... First of all, it was just a supportive... I'm not even sure our elected officials who actually can vote on this, two of them didn't. I know, you know, Assemblywoman Stomato changed her vote, because I have a screenshot of her original vote, which was she didn't vote. I guess after she realized the loophole, she changed her vote to a no vote. So, you know, I at least applaud you for at least involving yourself, because those who actually should involve themselves, two of them didn't, out of the three, didn't even provide a vote at first. So what I implore you, this should not be a resolution in support. You guys should be passing a resolution to Governor Murphy, asking him to veto it, because that would be the correct thing to do. And allow people their rights to know. That's the basic of government, is the residents have a right to know. And I'm not really sure why you, as the governing body, would want to restrict our rights to know. Thank you.
What restriction? Because we don't see the restriction. People are still allowed...
Sorry, Mr. La Palusa, but it's your policy that we don't do questions and answers, so you're certainly not going to question me.
As a statement, the change would be that a judge has discretion over whether legal fees would be awarded.
Anybody else on this? Our CR 14?
Good afternoon, City Council. Good afternoon, people. Thank you, guys, for being engaged in your civic form of government in this republic.
State your name and address for the record.
My name is Frank Richard of the Kushner family. My mailing location is CO Non-Domestic, 570 Broadway, Box 3661, Bayonne City, New Jersey State, the Union States of America, without the District of Columbia. I'm here today exhausted, mentally, physically, spiritually, but way closer to God than I was 70 weeks ago, when trespassed by officers of the city of Bayonne. And that's different than Bayonne City. The city of Bayonne is a corporation...
Excuse me? This is about the Oprah request?
Correct.
Oh, okay. If you want to speak in general, we have a public speaking portion. You can do that then, if you'd like.
Thank you, Mr. La Palusa. This is specific. And the trespass that happened to me personally, to my equitable estate, to my private offspring, and to my foreign grantor equitable trust, which is private, I haven't been able to get the records, and I've been requesting them for now 68 weeks from Bayonne. And I have a quite intimate relationship with Madeline C. Medina. I wouldn't say it's positive, but it is quite intimate. She's told me, as the city clerk, she's got free will and can make policies as she chooses. She once asked me, "Don't you have free will?" And those are on Oprah requestable documents as well. I haven't gotten those either. Part of that is because, as it stands, Bayonne, or the city of Bayonne, the corporate entity of the government, along with Bayonne City, has not fulfilled Oprah requests repeatedly. And further, to speak specifically on the resolution, I personally, along with many others here, just witnessed all of you pledge your allegiance to the republic. My understanding is you have all taken oaths to the New Jersey State Constitution and the Constitution for the United States of America, which does guarantee us a republican form of government. So thank you for taking that pledge. Thank you for taking those oaths. My intention of being here is to hold you to that. S 2930 and A 4045, they grant public agencies inalienable rights that only belong to natural people, living flesh and blood people, people of God, the Creator. In order for something like that to pass, the public would need to be involved, or a constitutional amendment, but at very minimum, a vote by the people. And 81% of the people of this state, according to a Fairly Dickinson poll in April of 2024 anno domini, 81% of people in this state do not support this bill that amends the process for requesting Oprah. And actually, there's only minor process changes. And I remember when this was first brought to the floor, I saw Senator Sarlo presenting this bill for the first time, and I got to opine on it there as well. And he said it was because there was too many commercial requesters. That was the reason. That was the big problem. I don't agree with that as the big problem. While I do support modernization, I do not support 2930 or 4045 in any form. I do support modernization, but that modernization needs to come in the form of technology. Technology that makes things easier for Madeline C. Medina, as the clerk of the city of Bayonne, and Vanessa as well. Because I was trying to get information on this meeting today, and I had a call in multiple times. There's no minutes on the website for the city of Bayonne that's supposed to be handled by Madeline C. Medina, and they need some technological resources, maybe. Those are the solutions we need, because I wasn't able to get this meeting's agenda today. And according to the Open Public Meetings Act, 10:46, I'm saying this off the top of my head, 10:46, it defines adequate notice as 48 hours' notice. We need 48 hours' notice of what's going to be said if we're going to have the ability to intelligently think about it. Agreed? Right? Isn't that... We need to be able to have an understanding. And I do understand that maybe municipalities are lacking resources to fill Oprah requests. But I do know that it is integral, it is foundational in our republic to have access and transparency. And any legislator who took an oath to the Constitution, as it's required in the New Jersey State Constitution of 1947, of which this is a certified copy of, from the archives in Trenton, it's required. It is required. And any action you take that does not defend and protect this Constitution is your personal action outside of your office, because it is ultra veris to the oath you took. That is a personal action, and then any presumed or assumed immunity you guys have as elective officials is waived, because you are not acting in the official capacity of your office, because you are not upholding your oath. And I am putting that on the notice today regarding S 2930 and A 4045. I have also served all 80 Assemblypeople and all 40 senators. In Trenton on Monday, our voices are being silenced, literally and metaphysically, or literally and figuratively, excuse me. Metaphysically, there's a lot more going on here. But yes, we cannot... I urge you to not support this. And in fact, I think you guys probably got yourselves involved in something you didn't need to last week, because the course of politics, as usual, has seemed to take its place. But it did one thing. I think it awakened a lot of the voices that people have, and I understand that time is a limited resource for us all here today. So I would just like to let you know, please do not support this bill in any format, because I personally have not even been able to get records from the city of Bayonne for trespass that is innumerable, but is already costing the city of Bayonne 45 million-plus silver-dollar coins that, if enumerated in Federal Reserve notes, at the rate that is in my fee schedule for these trespasses, that has been filed with the Attorney General and the Secretary of State and the New Jersey Superior Court Clerk.
Could you start wrapping up your comments, please?
Yes. I'm letting you know, it's going to cost a lot more to not have transparency than the few savings you may have. And it's sort of like having a library. Like, all the open public records are like books in a library. And it would be preposterous to say that I can't look at one of those books for a little while, or I can't take a look at one of those books. Or even further, what this bill says is if I ask to look for that book, it could be said that I'm harassing the public agency that's paid to maintain those records, and they can sue me. It's ridiculous. Thank you. Please do not support. And thank you for your service in your offices, because that's needed for civic discourse. Thank you.
Is there anybody else who would like to speak?
Kathleen Henderson, 88, West Sixth Street. I filed an Oprah last Tuesday. I have not heard anything yet. I know it takes seven days. Is that seven days to just be told, okay, we got it? Or is it seven days to get what I've asked for?
The municipality has an obligation to respond to that within seven business days.
And how long before I get what I've asked for?
Depends on the nature of what you're asking for. If it's something simple, you get it right away. If it's more difficult and documents have to be compiled or taken out of storage, it'll take a little longer.
And do you decide what I can have and I can't have?
If it's a public document, there's no discretion. It's what's contained in that public document that might be some discretion on the part of the clerk or the attorneys, because they have an obligation to redact certain information from these things.
Okay, so how long can I expect to get my answer? This is in regard... I'm going to tell you right now, it's in regards to the missing cats, and I've asked for information from many people in the city, and I want to know how long it's going to take, or is it going to be swept under the rug and stall me like this gentleman?
It will not be swept under a rug, Ms. Anderson. I don't recall seeing your... I mean, it wouldn't normally come past my desk, but it would go to the clerk's office, and then if need be, it would come to the Law Department for redactions. I don't know how specific your request was. I'm actually looking at my email now to see if I have anything on it.
Okay. We'll see.
Are there any other comments on the Oprah? Okay, Ms. Medina, let's move on.
So are you taking action on it, or would you like to withdraw? Mr. La Palusa?
I'm sorry, Madeline. I did not hear what you said.
Are you taking action, or...
No. They're just being withdrawn as the state did some action.
The legislature passed it already. This resolution asks the legislature to pass it. It's already been passed. It's a moot point. Moving on. Oh, one is a resolution postponing the ordinance entitled, ordinance of the municipal council of the city of Bayonne, County of Hudson, State of New Jersey, to amend the financial agreement for the long-term tax exemption by the entitled Bayonne Redevelopers Residential Urban Renewal Block 780 LLC with respect to Block 722 Lot 1 and Block 790 Lot 1.01 to the meeting of June 12, 2024. It's moved by Councilmember Perez. Mr. Booker, will you second?
Second.
And on the resolution, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
Oh, two is an ordinance of the city of Bayonne, County of Hudson, State of New Jersey, approving a financial agreement by and between the city of Bayonne and Avenue E, Lost Urban Renewal LLC, for the property located at 196-200 Avenue E, which is identified as Block 458, Lot 7, 8, and 9, as shown on the official tax map of the city, which was introduced and passed the first reading at the meeting held April 17, was published in the Jersey Journal and posted on the bulletin board as required by law, with notice that it would be further considered for final passage following a public hearing at this meeting of May 15. Is now before the council for its consideration and a public hearing. And a resolution moved by the council president, giving the ordinance second reading. Mr. Perez, will you second?
Second.
And on that resolution, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
Second reading is by title, an ordinance of the city of Bayonne, County of Hudson, State of New Jersey, approving a financial agreement by and between the city of Bayonne and Avenue E, Lost Urban Renewal LLC, for the property located at 196-200 Avenue E, which is identified as Block 458, Lot 7, 8, and 9, as shown on the official tax map of the city of Bayonne. The council is now ready to give all persons interested in this ordinance an opportunity to be heard concerning it. The council president will recognize anyone who wishes to speak.
Sharon Nadrowski, 126th Avenue A. Do we have a copy of this available for public?
Okay.
The copy of the ordinance available for public to see at this meeting?
It's been available... This is not scheduled for hearing. It's been on the website for over a month.
Here, though? I thought they were supposed to be on the bulletin board or here.
They're on the bulletin board.
Oh, it is? Okay. I'll go out there. So, Mr. La Palusa, how many years is this?
If you want to do question and answer, you can do it with the director for planning and zoning, Mr. Skinner.
It's a financial agreement. You're voting on it. You just don't know.
You didn't want to do question and answers, so I'll do it with somebody else.
For the financial agreement, it's a 20-year tax abatement.
And what is the schedule? The percentages?
The schedule is a sliding scale from 10% for the first 15 years, and then year 16, 17, 18, 19, 20, at 11%, and then the tax phase in of 20, 40, 60, 80, till it's off tax, it's off pilot.
So it's 10 years? The first 10 years are at 10%?
First 15 years.
15 years? Wow. That's a lot longer than normal. Okay, so we're giving out shorter ones, but better numbers. So in the end, it's basically the same.
For this project, again, the developer, along with the next one, because they're similar projects, are also dealing with some stormwater management solutions of holding tanks of stormwater and sanitary on site to help with the flood mitigations in the areas, along with a... It was agreed upon in the redevelopment agreement passed last month, that they'll also be contributing $150,000 for each to a park, for, you know, park improvements.
I understand the givebacks, but I think there's a lawsuit right now about one of those givebacks from some developers that you guys are involved in for the pedestrian crosswalks. So I hope we're going to be diligent about making sure these givebacks are actually given back. Thank you.
Anyone else?
You want to just stay close?
Sure.
No protest against objections to or statements in favor of this ordinance or its passage has been filed with me. May I have a motion to close?
So move.
And on the motion to close, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
And a resolution ordering final passage.
Move it.
And on that resolution, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
Oh, three is an ordinance of the city of Bayonne, County of Hudson, State of New Jersey, approving a financial agreement by and between the city of Bayonne and 1207-121 JFK Boulevard Urban Renewal LLC, for the property located at 1207-121 JF Kennedy Boulevard, which is identified as Block 24, Lots 2 and 3, as shown on the official tax map of the city of Bayonne, which was introduced and passed the first reading at a meeting held April 17, was published in the Jersey Journal and posted on the bulletin board as required by law, with notice that it would be further considered for final passage following a public hearing at this meeting of May 15. Is now before the council for its consideration and a public hearing. And a resolution moved by the council president, giving the ordinance second reading. Mr. Perez, will you second?
Second.
And on that resolution, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
Second reading is by title, an ordinance of the city of Bayonne, County of Hudson, State of New Jersey, approving a financial agreement by and between the city of Bayonne and 1207-121 JFK Boulevard Urban Renewal LLC, for the property located at 1207-121 JF Kennedy Boulevard, which is identified as Block 24, Lots 2 and 3, as shown on the official tax map of the city. The council is now ready to give all persons interested in this ordinance an opportunity to be heard concerning it. The council president will recognize anyone who wishes to speak.
Sharon Nadrowski, 126th Avenue A. I'm going to ask the same questions, Joe. So how many years is this one?
20 years.
And are we given the same extra favorable terms? What is the percentage scale?
Again, the percentage scale is 10% for the first 15 years, 16, 17, 18, 19, 20, at 11%, with the sliding scales of the taxes otherwise do at 20%.
So it's basically a 30-year condensed in this dollar amount if you did the percentages based on the 30-year percentage ones.
I mean, I don't understand that question.
Because normally, the 10% doesn't stay for 15 years. So a 30-year, you would increase it sooner, so the savings over time, you know.
Yeah, but again, you get the flexibility for the statutory, but even on the tax abatements for that, remember, the municipality gets 95% of the pilot payments, so we're getting more than we would have under conventional taxes. And you have to butt for test that the taxes, you know, have to be increased than more of what is currently there, so.
Speaking of... So the butt-for test that you just mentioned, so this, in the opinion of those that offered it, but for not this pilot, this would not have been built?
Yes.
Okay.
And also with that...
I thought with the study that was done, that all the buildings in Bayonne, that once they're built, they're... We have 100% fill rate on them, according to the study that was done back in 2022. So but for, I don't quite understand that. If stuff is that people are going to build without a pilot, if they know they're going to be ramped up in full within the first six months, I think that's what the study that Bayonne published was said.
So upon the study, the occupancy rate of the apartments were a little under 95%.
Can you speak into the mic, please?
Sorry. Can you hear me now? Sorry. So for the study, again, you know, the study found that there was 95%, a little under 95% occupancy on that. But again, for the buildings, given the environment of interest rates and construction costs going up, again, different time, you know, we're looking at what the current economic situation.
So we're supplementing the inflation?
No, we're looking at the environment of how, what it costs to construct, you know, for a building, dealing with the interest rates and, you know, from the banks and along with the, you know, construction costs.
I understand that. And also, I understand that we get to keep more of that, but that only means that the part that doesn't go to the... And also, I understand that we get to keep more of that, but that only means that the part that doesn't go to the school system is going to come back on the school portion of the tax and back to the taxpayers of Bayonne.
But with the financial agreements, there's a mandatory policy from the council that 10% of the pilot.
So then you're not getting 95% of it?
For the statute, the municipality gets that, and then at their council's discretion, within the financial agreements, they give 10% of that to the minute, to the school board.
So is that at their discretion, or is it bound by in the thing?
It's in the financial.
It's in the financial agreement, so net-net, the city's not getting 95%. They're going to pass it through to the Board of Ed.
They will get 85% to the municipality, 10% to the Board of Ed, and then 5% to the county.
Okay, so it's not, so it is 10% to the schools.
But it's still more than you would have had under conventional taxes.
Yeah, you're cutting out the library.
That is still the responsibility of the municipal, of the city of Bayonne.
Understood, but I'm just saying, either the pilot, that doesn't get calculated in there.
Again, the city, just along with the Board of Education, has a financial level.
Yeah, but you can't have it both ways, you're saying that we're getting all this extra, but they're not missing out because we're going to give it to them anyway, so they're getting it.
We're getting more under taxes than we would have otherwise.
So it's just coming to us and then we're passing the same amount, you just said we're passing the same amount to the library and to the school that they would normally have gotten.
The taxes that would have been collected for the properties had it not been developed, there's still more than under.
No, I understand that, that wasn't the question, it was the percentage.
So, but again, the percentages on that, yes.
Yes, so basically, we're getting it and passing it through to these entities, so the school's going to be fully getting what they would have got.
They would have gotten 10%, yes.
So, yeah, so we're not, the city's technically not keeping it, they're getting it, but they're giving it right back to the school, so the school is made whole. Is that what I'm hearing?
I mean, like I said, per the agreements of what's written in there, 10%, you know, from the direction of the city council goes of the pilot payments to this.
But you're saying at the direction, so is it optional?
It's in the, written in the financial.
So it's guaranteed right now, because the financial agreement is going to be adopted tonight?
The financial agreement says 10% to the school.
So the school's going to get what they would have got, it's just going to pass through the city like it does anyway, and then get moved over to the school, because no one pays taxes directly to the school system. Correct, okay, thank you.
Anyone else? No protest against objection.
Hold on, one more speaker.
One more, sorry, didn't see him.
Just real quick, Jason Gass, 73 East 25th Street. Can, I don't know if this is like now I make this, or during like the general, but can we come to like some kind of agreement where instead of doing like the 90-10, because I'm going to get a tax increase from the school board. So you keep doing these pilot programs, which is taking money from the school systems, and like Sharon just said, they're passing it on to me as a homeowner to pay the increase, so can you guys come up with some kind of plan which limits, perhaps, where maybe you could take 75% and then give the, the schools 20? Or instead, maybe go back to the regular way it was, where it was almost like 50-50? Like the school board would get 50, and then the city would get 50, and then the county would get 5? Because as a real estate broker in town, with a 95% vacancy rate, you'd have people beating down your door to build these projects with numbers like that, and especially at these numbers that they're getting for the rent. I understand, like, you know, it's 10% of profit, 12% of profit, but theoretically, if there were no pilot programs and they wanted to build these buildings, the value of the building would be appraised and assessed, and you would tax normally, like you do anybody else who's a homeowner in Bayonne. So for the past years and years and years, I get it, we got the ball rolling, we wanted them to come in, they weren't going to do it, they were going to go do it in Newark, they were going to do it somewhere else, where the city was more like, you know, hey, come here, we'll give you more benefits, but the ball is already rolling. I see it now, where like the lowest one-bedroom rental in Bayonne today, I just checked, is $1,500, and it doesn't include heat or hot water, and it's about 400 square feet. I work with TRA, I work with Section 8, they adjust for COLA. Every year, they seem to be raising the amounts that the government provides assistance for people who need it. A two-bedroom from TRA is at $2,099 max, without heat and hot water included. It goes up to $2,299 with heat and hot water included. My fear is this, all of these developers are getting in, and if they can't get the rents, or people take leases and move out, they will just defer to public assistance in Section 8 to fill up these rentals and get their money, because they are not allowed to discriminate in the state of New Jersey for income status. Can you guys please get together and recalculate these percentages that you're throwing out to these developers? And also, I keep seeing Urban Renewal LLC, I understand it's a different LLC, it's a different entity, but all of these companies, do they have the same principles?
That, that title where it says Urban Renewal LLC is required by the statute, they have to set up an entity that, that has that.
So they're all different LLCs, and it's not just like one or two or three guys making different LLCs?
And we have an incredibly hard time following, as these things go through the project, and they finally get their financing, and they have to set up the Urban Renewal LLC. We're trying to track all this stuff from, you know, it's difficult, but it's required by law, it's a push-down from the state of New Jersey, so.
I get it, so if one guy wants to buy up all the property in Bayonne, you can't stop him. It's not like he can have a monopoly over property in Bayonne, is there an ordinance here that limits the amount of property?
No, you, you, that, I think would be unconstitutional, but the fact of the matter is, all of these things that end in Urban Renewal LLC are required by statute to have that.
Okay, so, all right, so back to the thing, can we maybe put it on the table to have you guys perhaps discuss with everything that's happening now, with the real estate market, things are booming, yes, interest rates are very high, I totally agree with you, I have buyers now that cannot buy homes because of interest rates, and the developers may use that as a tactic or leverage to get you guys to say yes to the abatement. I think perhaps you might need a stronger broker in the room to do these deals with these people. That's just my honest opinion, and if you want my advice, I'll give it free of charge. I will sit with you, and I will give you some ideas, and perhaps we get a yes at a better term, to help the rest of the taxpayers. You don't have to pay me for that, just call me and let me know, Gary, I'm, I'm with you, man, I'm a, I'm a taxpayer too, you know? I hate seeing increases from the city, from the school, and I'm looking up the block, and I'm looking at the building on 25th and Prospect, I can't find parking, when I come home, my daughter at 9 o'clock from karate, I'm driving around for 25, 30 minutes, I got a letter in the house by herself so she can go shower. I'm going around, she's in a house showering in a house, 11 years old, that's not right. Has any public parking been built with all the development that has happened? Have you set aside some land to put up some public parking for the people here? No, who is doing the thinking around here?
Can we stick to the?
All right, Gary, I don't know, thanks, so let me speak.
Yeah, you got it, thanks.
Anyone else? No protest against objections to or statements in favor of this ordinance or its passage has been filed with me, may I have a motion to close?
So move.
And on the motion to close, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weemer?
Aye.
Mr. Lappalusa?
Aye.
And a resolution ordering final passage.
Move it.
And on that resolution, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weemer?
Aye.
Mr. Lappalusa?
Aye.
Oh four is an ordinance amending and supplementing the revised general ordinances of the city of Bayonne, Chapter 7 Traffic, which was introduced and passed the first reading at a meeting held April 17, was published in the Jersey Journal and posted on the bulletin board as required by law, with notice that it would be further considered for final passage following a public hearing at this meeting of May 15. Is now before the council for its consideration and a public hearing. And a resolution moved by Councilmember Perez giving the ordinance second reading, Mr. Booker, will you second?
Second.
And on that resolution, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weemer?
Aye.
Mr. Lappalusa?
Aye.
Second reading is by title, an ordinance amending and supplementing the revised general ordinances of the city of Bayonne, Chapter 7 Traffic. It is adding eight restricted parking zones and deleting three. The council is now ready to give all persons interested in this ordinance an opportunity to be heard concerning it. The council president will recognize anyone who wishes to speak. No protest against objections to or statements in favor of this ordinance or its passage has been filed with me, may I have a motion to close? And on the motion to close, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weemer?
Aye.
Mr. Lappalusa?
Aye.
And a resolution ordering final passage.
So move.
And on that resolution, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weemer?
Aye.
Mr. Lappalusa?
Aye.
Our first speaker is Ms. Cheryl Riscard.
Stop the mimicking. Good morning, good evening, council and staff. Cheryl Riscard, 390 Avenue C, Bayonne. We're back to the chemicals that are through Bayonne, coronium hexavalent and the formaldehyde and somewhat others that's going on. It's continuing, it's getting worse, and I'm getting sick. I can't prove it yet, hopefully, one day I will be able to, but I don't understand why the city and the mayor, who told me last week when I asked him, why can't you talk to me, mayor, you're not answering my letters, and he said, you're crazy. I think that is the most ignorant, unprofessional, low-life statement you could say to, to a resident. If I was crazy, I wouldn't be here. I think I'm pretty smart to come to the end of what is going on with these chemicals that nobody ever thought anybody was going to come through with. Why are they here? I know it's not you, I know it's not you, chief, but you need to go to the head, chief, of why they're letting this person, Michael, control the city, and he is the one that's buying everything. And this is my old boyfriend's friend, and I could go on, on about him, but I chose not to. But I do know that Cheryl is getting very sick, and I'm being abused in the street, and now it's starting with the children. Thank God I got the Lord. I'm telling, I'm asking you, chief, to do something about this, because one more, one more kid says something to me sexually, there's going to be a problem. I was never in jail, and I don't want to see it, but I am, I'm not going to put up with abuse from kids on the street. It's not going to happen. Never mind you grown-ups doing the mimicking that this person is telling yous to do. I got this whole story from top to bottom. Also, there was a movie about coronium hexavalent that killed people and does kill people. And is that what he's doing, making a movie, and he's going to wind up making millions of dollars when Cheryl Riscard is dead? I don't think so. I don't think so, and I'm sorry for my loud tone of voice in the ER every half hour. Every half hour, every couple of hours. It's totally, totally out of order. And then, getting thrown out of everywhere, everything that he buys. He's doing something, he thinks I'm going to move out of town. Not happening, this is my town, this was a beautiful town. Everybody's letting it run to the ground for this person because he's making tons of money, who is he supporting? And that coronium hexavalent, that 5G tenor is on the building of 880 Kennedy Boulevard, where I lived for 30-something years. Michael Quintella bought the building in 2000. 2004, when he put that antenna on the building, myself and another tenant got cancer. She died, I survived. You need to do something about this. Fight for it, don't be afraid. Lord will take care of you, I promise. Can't be afraid of the above. He's going to do this to me, I don't want this, I called a doctor in New York, he said, don't come to me with that. Can't be afraid. I'm, I'm about to take that red thing and shut it down. If my arm was tall enough to, to reach it, I would, and then get arrested. My life, my granddaughter, two-year-old, and my daughter and her husband is more important to me than letting a chemical ride around and kill me, my life is important to me, I love myself. I had Aaron's Goldson tell me the other day, Cheryl, everybody hates you in Bayonne. Oh, they do? Well, I love myself. And then his cousin says, Cheryl, I can't wait till the formaldehyde kills you and your family. Who are you talking about? A two-year-old baby? And a 42-year-old young lady? Over my dead body, let me tell you, he's lucky I didn't take my hand and smack him. Smacked him right across the face, and Aaron's Gold is running, is helping that situation with those chemicals. He's in in that store all hours of the night, because I'm there, and that chemical is running all day and all night. You could hear it in their McDonald's. It's so sick and so scared, and letting this guy do whatever he wants to do because he's making millions or billions of dollars, he's getting involved in everything. And if it wasn't for Joseph Scudder, Michael Quintella, Ben Fasetti, that tormented me at 880 Boulevard, and Cheryl Riscard, his movies would have never went through the theater, and he wouldn't have this money. This is coming to an end, and it feels like my life is too. I'm sick, I never looked like this. And everybody should be ashamed of themselves, everybody in Bayonne knows me, except for the people, I mean, look outside, I don't see anybody that I know anymore.
Cheryl, please wrap up your comments.
Gary, can't, this, this, the city should know what's going on, just like this gentleman said. But there's one thing I want to say, you need the Lord, you need to find the Lord and keep him, and you need to go to the governor or whoever, because I saw the gas and electric bill for that, for that meter, and you know what it said? Unknown. I know you don't want to hear it, my life is in stake.
I listened to every word you said, but we have other people that want to speak as well.
Right, well, other people spoke longer than what I'm saying, and this is serious, this is the most serious thing that there is, and making a, wait, Gary, and making a movie about me, and the police putting lights on me, I'm sick of it.
Wrap up your comments, that's all I'm asking you to do.
Chief, you need to talk to your officers. You need to talk to the officers.
Cheryl, you have to wrap it up and finish.
Wrap it up, go to the state and stop, the chem, stop, get the chemicals back down. Do whatever you got to do with the wires.
Let other people speak.
There probably isn't anybody else that want, maybe a couple people, all I know is my life is at stake, and so is a two-year-old baby, Gary, think about it.
I would like you to go back to your seat, finish, I'm going to give you 10 seconds, finish your comment and go back to your seat, please.
Go to the state and tell them, well, go, go against it, do not allow it.
Okay, Cheryl, you have to go back to your seat.
Thank you, Gary.
Thank you.
Mr. Kushner? Mr. Kushner? Did you want to address the council? You signed up to speak.
Could you address me my Christian name, please? Frank Richard?
Frank Richard would.
I just want to remind everybody, it's a five-minute statement period.
My name is Frank Richard, free man, man of God, occupant of the office of man, I'll speak quickly if the time is limited. I couldn't really speak on any of the ordinances that were up for vote today, because I didn't have the agenda. I called in today, and it took a while to even get it. I called in today, and it took a while to even get it provided. As well as, there's no minutes to all your meetings for the last, I think, like, eight weeks or so, if you check online. So I wasn't able to make an informed decision on any of that. But I did come here under forced coercion and duress. Because when I spoke to Vanessa in the clerk's office of Madeline C. Medina, the clerk of the city of Bayonne, she told me that she didn't have to give me a reason as to why I couldn't get the agenda with adequate notice, which is a violation of the OPMA, and why I couldn't get the minutes with adequate notice, which is a violation of the OPMA as well. And the very spirit of the law. She said, "If you want, if you want to know why, come here today." So can you guys tell me why? I even explained to her, because she personally received my fee schedule. I explained to her the fees that were involved with me having to come here under coercion and duress. I wasn't planning on coming here today. I do thank you guys for being here regularly and having chosen the field of representing the people. And like I mentioned earlier, I would just want to hold you guys to the oaths that you've taken to those constitutions. Because those very foundational documents are what has led our country from going too far astray in any way. The separation of the executive judicial and legislative branches are very beneficial because they're checks and balances. But I've seen that degrade over the time. Very recently, including recently, with New Jersey legislation trying to pass a law that they can appoint appellate judges, which, how can the legislature appoint the judiciary? But like I said, I'm here today because of what's going on in the clerk's office with the open public records that are unavailable. Further, I, under the common law, I have records that I have not been able to receive. I also have made requests under the Freedom of Information Act, which I haven't received. And you guys all take separate oaths to two constitutions, the New Jersey State Constitution and the Constitution for the United States of America. I accept your oaths, I bind you to them. It's been seventy weeks that this state, the city of Bayonne as a state, correct? The city of Bayonne has trespassed directly against me and the state of New Jersey. Directly against me, my equitable estate, my private offsprings, and my private foreign grant to our trust. I am here just fulfilling the prophecy to end the transgression in seventy weeks. Under God. Thank you, and thank everyone for being here. Civil discourse is very important.
Ms. Garcia?
Excuse me, I have one thing to add. I'd just like to correct my mailing location from earlier. It's 570 Broadway, Box 3166. 3166, 3166. Thank you.
Ms. Garcia?
Good evening. My name is Dania Garcia. I own property at 251 Prospect Avenue. I'm here to discuss animal welfare and animal, and a TNR program in Bayonne. First, I'd like to say that I'm part of the Bayonne Feral Cat Foundation, along with Kathy Henderson. They've been doing this work way longer than I have. We rescue cats, we trap and do the TNR program, which is the Trap, Neuter, and Release Program, if anyone is not familiar. I wanted to bring up a situation that's really important to us because there's a lot of volunteers, either here or online, who are very concerned about a situation that we had. On April 16th, there was a cat colony at the port near the Teardrop Memorial. We found out later on, after frantic calls, talking to the police department, Port Authority, and countless people, that the cats that we had been taking care of in shelters that were outside the property of Bayonne Dry Dock, and that's a point I want to make, disappeared when we found out through other people that some phantom black truck was trapping them and picked them up. It was not Jeff Santini who, by the Bayonne ordinance, if we look, if you read the Bayonne ordinance on the TNR program, there are certain protocols that have to be followed. Now, backtrack, when I sent the email to everyone here, including Sue Kavanaugh, she mentioned that the cat colony was not registered with the city of Bayonne. And I'm gonna disagree with that because she, she kind of was disrespectful and accused myself of lying, of putting forth untruths. And we're just volunteers. I don't work for the city, neither do any of us. We spent countless hours and money, personal money, to help actually the animals in Bayonne. So let me just read something that she wrote. "The administration, Mayor Davis, council members, and the Bayonne Police Department are very concerned about the welfare of any and all animals in the city." Well, I beg to differ, and this is why. Because, she then says that the colony was not registered. I have an email here dated February 16th, 2023, over a year ago, from Michelle O'Reilly. She's no longer working at the Health Department. And I totally understand. I'm a businessperson, I'm professional. I understand there might not be any records of my email. Maybe it was a mishap. But I have an email that says, "Dania was the first person in the city of Bayonne to register, so she is all set to go." The title of the email is "Trapping at the Port of Bayonne." I was one of the first people not doing this, but at last year's meeting, a year and a half, when the TNR program was set forth with the $25,000 to trap and release cats. So I was registered. Fast forward a year and a half, we've been taking care of the cats, not me, a bunch of people. Port Authority Police knew us, they were friendly. Now, Bayonne Dry Dock takes it upon themselves to go outside their property, which is outside their property, outside their fence, and mysteriously make all the cats disappear. Now, there is a mysterious company called East Coast Trapping, Trapping Cats East Coast. It's under investigation under several people. And we hope to have some information because we have gotten no help from the city of Bayonne. From what we understand, this company does not exist. It is not lawful to just go ahead and trap cats and make them go away. You have to follow certain protocols, take them to shelters, there's a seven-day hold. We are not a group of crazy cat people. We love animals. And Bayonne is full of animal lovers. If you go online, where I've been posting and I've been accused of talking badly about the city, I'm not. I just want answers, and I want some type of decency, right? Concern over a situation that we were highly concerned in, and we're looked at as if, as if we're being unreasonable, get some help to find out what this company did. And what it looks like and what it's pointing to. They did something criminal, they did something unlawful. They probably had these cats euthanized, taken to somewhere, to some location where they got euthanized. And let me add that about $1,500 of money that I collected personally with Bayonne Feral Cat Foundation was used to trap and fix these cats. So some of these cats were already fixed, they were being taken care of, and now they're no longer. We probably, we for sure know that they did something very bad because none of the information we've gotten has told us otherwise. So I'm just here to hopefully get some more answers. Maybe the police department, the animal control of the police department that has the person in charge that can find out who this phantom company is. And they're saying that they have an adoption. They took these feral cats that can't be adopted, they're now all of a sudden adoptable? Okay, so just give us the information. Because there's plenty of people in Bayonne that love animals. And, you know, it's not uncommon for a city to have animal services. The city of Morristown has a program called Adopt a Stray, Get a Free Spay. The city of Edison has a big program. Jersey City, my hometown, has a great program. Parsippany has an animal shelter, and it has a van. Bayonne, the city of Bayonne has to really think about these services. And if it's not important to city council, but it's important to your constituents, then we should really address it.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Actually, you signed up to speak?
No.
I'm asking, yeah.
No, I didn't, I know you had to.
Yeah, but if you want to speak, just, I'll let you come up, state your name and address, please.
Retired Army Sergeant Anthony Pagano, 51, Tresca Avenue, Bayonne. I don't know if the city can get or has the right to get access to Port Authority Police records, but I will tell you in reference to what Dania is speaking to. Sunday, I was told that an individual that worked with us with these animals down at the Dry Dock saw in writing a police report from the Port Authority Police that these 23 cats or so were taken and brought to three different shelters to be adopted and neutered, TNRed. I don't know if the city has the right or can get this copy of this police report. But if you can get this copy of this police report, because this young lady who saw it, saw it in writing. She said it was from the police officer of the Port Authority who was in charge of this investigation down there. I don't know, again, if you can get a copy of this record of where these cats were sent. Because as far as we know, to excuse the language, Gary, Neil, whatever, this is baloney. I'll use the word baloney. These cats were taken and thrown in the goddamn river, and we know it. Can we prove it? No. But if, and when we can prove it, the city, the PA, and especially the criminals at Dry Dock should be held accountable. But again, all I'm saying is that if you can get it, if you have the right to it, I don't know. I don't know about these things.
I'm not sure either.
Okay. But if you can get it, there is a report in writing where these animals were taken. Three different shelters from the PA. Thanks, guys. I'm sorry, thank you.
Did you sign up as well?
I did not, but I did.
All right, make your comments quick, and please state your name and address.
My name is Tamika Bolden. I live at 483 Avenue E. I just want to put on the record for each and every one of you. I've passed some emails with you, Gary. I know I've passed some emails with you, Mr. Booker, in regards to the road conditions here in the city of Bayonne, which I'm sure all of you pass on every day. I particularly pass on Avenue E every day, and I pass over the bridge that apparently is with the city, the state of New Jersey. That needs to be addressed. But that's not the only area which needs to be addressed as well. I mean, there's several potholes and conditions, poor conditions on Broadway that we drive up and down every day. Two weeks ago, we had a festival that was on Avenue E or what have you. And just trying to drive down that street is just terrible. So I would like to know, or at least have in the notes, what are the plans for us to repair these areas? Because I have been told that Avenue E is going to be repaved, but I don't have any timing as to when that's going to happen. And the more and more that those streets become, you know, undrivable, it's just wear and tear on our cars, and that's stuff that we have to pay for. Which, as we all know, is living as consumers. Inflation is high, and everything that you're paying for is at least 30% or 20% higher.
So this is a statement period. If you want to wait till the end, we could speak to Public Works and see if there is some sort of plan?
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bolden.
Anybody else?
Madam, is that the end of the list?
Okay. Moving forward, it's an ordinance for introduction, an ordinance of the city of Bayonne, County of Hudson, State of New Jersey, approving the redevelopment plan for the property located at 21-29, 35 and 37 West 25th Street, which is identified as Block 183, Lots 5, 6, and 8.01, as shown on the official tax map of the city of Bayonne, and a resolution fixing Wednesday, June 12th, at 6:00 PM in the Dr. E. Harrington Council Chambers, as a time and place for public hearing and final passage. The resolution is moved by Councilmember Perez. Mr. Booker, will you second?
Second.
On the resolution, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
I am going to, I'm gonna vote aye on this introduction. However, at the caucus meeting, I stated that this is exactly the type of thing that I would want to see workforce housing included on, which is something that can be done to help stabilize rents, which was talked about earlier by someone who got up and spoke, help to keep those people that are hardworking in town, especially when it is something of this size. Going forward, I would also hope that we would look into the potential for a resolution or ordinance governing this holistically, as a whole, going forward, that this should be included in certain projects of a certain height, or a certain size, or a certain unit requirement. But it's very, very important, and several people who were here tonight spoke about the affordability issue. So between now and next month, I hope there's some discussion going on with the parties, who I don't know if they're in the room or not, they might have stepped out. I hope some conversation happens before next month.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weemer? Mr. La Palusa?
Yeah, I agree with my colleague. We asked a number of questions last Wednesday, a little vague. We're waiting for the RDA to come out with the exact numbers. So if this does not have the exact numbers by next month, obviously, we will not be voting on this. But Ms. Micali, if you want to explain a little bit?
Sure. Thank you, Mike Micali. I am the redevelopers attorney, the property owner's attorney, actually. So with this project, the redevelopment plan that is being introduced tonight has, unlike many other redevelopment plans, has options. From five stories all the way up to 10. And as you go through those stories, there are things that the developer has to give back to the community. And one of those big-ticket items, there are a bunch of smaller things. But one of the big-ticket items is a community facility, something that Bayonne's been looking for for years. And that was the negotiation back and forth with the city professionals. And so we came to 10,000 square feet for the highest-order one. There's a step down as you go down to a smaller space, because you can't fit as much. But there will be 10,000, if we go to the max, there will be a 10,000-square-foot community facility here. How that's programmed will be up to the city. There will be a redevelopment agreement that will give you guys final say over what actually happens in that space. That might not be next month, but you will see something that we show you, as I always do, I'll meet with you, to show you what the project's gonna look like, give you some ideas of what we think should be in there. But really, tell us, you know, what does the community want or need that can go in that building within, let's assume, the largest footprint, within 10,000 square feet? What would be a good give-back? I think Brian Slough said something about exercise facility for kids. It doesn't have to be that, I'm just throwing that out there. He said that at the planning board meeting last night. Whatever it is that the city needs and wants there, you know, we'll entertain it. It really is, it's not our, we don't consider it, it's part of our building, but we don't consider it something that we're gonna be dictating who's gonna be in there, what it's gonna be. Clearly.
What is your timeframe, do you think? I mean, I know you can't give me an example.
Yeah, I.
So you're saying possibly not by next month?
Well, I think we'll have ideas about what can go in there by, in a couple of weeks for you. But if you have ideas, certainly throw them out there. And if you can talk and exchange ideas amongst yourselves, with yourselves, with your professionals, so they can pass those messages along, perhaps there's a consensus that you can reach as to what you want in there. All I know is the redevelopment plan will say it has to be community space. And like I said, what that means is entirely up to you. And if so, if you have ideas, tell Mr. Skellander, he'll tell me, tell me when we meet face to face. We're agnostic on it. Pete has some ideas. You know, as a fitness guy, I think that's probably where his mind is, that he would like to see some sort of fitness facility or something that he can sort of leave as his legacy in the building. But we're not wedded to that. If there's, I don't know, I don't know. Is there something that you have on your mind now that you want to throw out there? Or if you've already told Mr. Skellander, we are, we are open.
I mean, it's something we'll have a discussion, obviously, with our recreation director. I could think of a couple of things, but I don't know if they're the same as what he's thinking.
Right, that's, yeah, and listen.
So, you know, we all could probably think of a number of different things here.
Yeah.
But it's a matter of what are you proposing?
Yeah, and that's what.
We understand, in other words, we also know that the recreational space will change with the amount of floors on the building and the space that's created.
Right, yes. As the smaller the building gets, if we opt for the smaller alternatives, the square footage goes down. I think even at the five-story, I don't think there is any requirement. But again, those are smaller buildings, hard to program that kind of facility with community space dedicated to it. But it was something that we wanted, that the city asked for, and we said, "Okay." You know, it makes sense, it's on a good block, it's the center, you know, it's, someone once called it the corner of Main and Main, we're close to that. And it's been a place where the community has gathered for years to exercise and to meet neighbors and to talk and to watch things on TV. And it would continue to be that. And that's a nice thought, I just, you know, and if there isn't a consensus, if you want to put options, and then as we get towards construction, we can finalize it by some sort of vote. You guys will have control over that, not us. And we know that.
Excuse me, if I can.
Sure.
Forgive my voice, my allergies are kind of getting the best of me right now. But I just want to jump in, seriously, I was just thinking about what you're saying, as a dual relation. Member, I'm sorry, thank you. Member, I'm sorry, thank you. My voice is getting the best of me. The fact of the matter is that I, being on the planning board, and I actually, last night, we went over this project. And being that it is in close proximity to the school, there were concerns, and what I want to echo with my colleague is the fact that I, it is discussions internal workforce housing, all of those, those things. And there are a lot of options with this project, and, and height being one of them, and being dropped into the middle of that neighborhood. And we went over, and we had the schematics and everything else. I think it's a good project, all right? And the city is open to all the things with the developers. So I wanted to echo with my colleague that it is in discussions. I did, and one of the things sitting up here is I have the ability to sit on the planning board. So a lot of these ideas and things that come to the council, I sit here quietly, but I already know what's going on. That's why I make my vote. So I think it's a good project, and it is open for discussions. I echo my colleague in terms of workforce housing and all of those things, they're all on the table, and I think it's a good project. Thank you.
And listen, in terms of timing, Council President, we, we can, we can certainly work with Mr. Skelander, and I said, as I said, please communicate to him. You can communicate directly with me, you, you all know where to find me. But communicate to him, I'm just looking for, you know, rather than five answers, one or two. And, and that's really going to be the hard part, because if you ask us, we'll give you one answer.
I'd like to say something. I, I have these discussions with the mayor, I mean, for the last several years, where we're looking at trying to build a youth center here in Bayonne for our youth, to keep them busy and not to get in trouble. And I think we should look at that very carefully.
That's, and that's perfectly, yeah, that, that's a, a, a perfect example of a suggestion that we, we, we need to hear. If that's what you want, if your conversations with the mayor have, have been about that, then tell us. Tell us, we're at your mercy, and, and we, we really are excited about that space. It, it creates energy in a neighborhood that, that needs a little bit more of that. You know, you have more people visiting, more people traveling up and down the block, and young people, and mixing with each other, if it's a youth facility, or members of the community mixing with each other, which you don't really get an opportunity to do much of anymore, you know?
That's part of my concern. So while I think it's exceedingly vague, I know it's surrounded with good intentions, but 25th Street has current concerns, that McDonald's, the flow of traffic, the children that congregate there at the close of school. Now with the potential to put in public space that might be used for great purpose, you're also now faced with traffic safety changes that I think you'd have to make to put a building there, given that corner, as well as the parking, which, going through the McDonald's parking lot, there is a public parking lot on the other side of it, but 10,000 square feet potentially, on top of the, whatever the units would be, I, I would imagine a huge portion of public allocated parking would be a part of the plan.
It, it, as far as I know, we have, excuse me, 1.25 or there, or thereabouts?
For the parking ratio.
For the parking ratio.
It's about that.
Yes. And there, and so, just so everyone's aware, and I did speak to at least one council person about this, the gym currently takes, in the lot that you're talking about, takes up thirty, I think thirty-something parking spaces, leases those spaces from the city at a cost per month, between certain hours during the week and between certain hours on the weekend. Those will no longer be used by us exclusively during those time periods, we're giving those up. So we're returning public parking fully back to the city. I think we're going to terminate that lease. So there will be more public parking than normally available during those after-school hours, because that's when, I think ours is 3:30 or 3 o'clock to 7:00 every day. So we're giving that, we're, we're getting rid of that. So that could help alleviate those concerns. But, but we do have more than one-to-one parking in this building.
It, it is more than one-to-one.
And will any of that be dedicated to open parking for non-residents? In other words, people who want to use the recreational space?
I don't think so. I, well, I mean, we could talk about that, for sure.
Well, currently, what I do want to just chime in briefly, kind of with this redevelopment plan, this redevelopment plan is kind of broad so that it, it can be, you know, as they get towards, you know, a final concept plan, that they would submit for site plan to the board, the planning board, you know, gives us then the ability in the redevelopment agreement to then, you know, put in these terms on, you know, workforce housing, to the use of the public space, you know, for, and then also, you know, even on, you know, potentially some dedication of, you know, the parking, you know, to that further municipality. You know, right now, again, this is just, looking at it, very broad, has a couple concepts out there.
I know it's broad, but it's true what my colleague said about some of the concerns. I know we, we've addressed some of them, the parking, 36 is a start, but if, if that is 10,000 square feet, I can only imagine how many people are going to come to use
I hope, I hope as many people can come as possible, and I hope, I hope we have.
25th Street is very busy already.
I hope we have positive traffic in that neighborhood, and, and the concerns that have been raised, as far as I know about the McDonald's, don't occur on the 25th Street side, they occur on the Broadway side. And we are going to design this so that, that the, the traffic does not interfere. Right now, you have a gym, so you probably have more ins and outs at that gym than you will during even the peak hours with, I'll have to look at it, but a gym is a pretty sizable gym. You have ins and outs there, it's a commercial facility, so.
So, Council President, just want to chime in, you know, on that, you know, when it comes up for the site plan review, for the traffic engineering report, we can ask that the, you know, developer provide that comparison too, on, you know, what's currently there, you know, again, what would be then proposed, so for the traffic study that they'd have to submit for the site plan.
That would be a good ask.
Sure.
Yeah. And this is a good project, and that's, that's what I think we need to keep in our heads as we move forward with this. That's my opinion, anyway, that nothing's perfect. Nothing. No building we've built, no plan we have, no plan we will ever make will be perfect. But I'd rather do something and learn from whatever mistakes we make, prevent the ones we can, but try to do something, try to do something. Because if you're waiting for a community facility that's going to have exactly the number of parking spaces that we're going to need to service the facility, we're never going to get one, ever. I mean, we have parking that.
We agree with that, but 36, depending on your square footage.
Yeah.
May not be enough.
No, and, and listen, there's parking that's not utilized in Bayonne, and, and behind Barnabas, right? Nobody parks in that. That's what I'm saying. If we keep waiting for, for everything to be, for the conditions to be perfect, we may never find a spot, another developer, another place where we can do what we're doing here. And, and I would hate to leave that on the table, I really would, because I don't think you're going to have another facility. This is a big enough lot that we could do that, and we could, we did pull the setbacks away from the rear yard. We are, we condensed the building, we brought everything down as tight as we can, but we can still do this, and I don't want to leave that on the table when, when it's just an opportunity, and I don't want it to be an opportunity lost, just because we couldn't get everything just perfect.
So trying to keep an open mind, which is what you're asking.
Yeah.
Will be a little better if I have a concrete.
Absolutely. And, and right, and understanding the hours of those things and, and the capacity for those things. So, so yes, you know, it's, there are, there are things that still have to be finalized on this, that the plan creates sort of a, an outline for what we're going to be doing that needs, the picture needs to be filled in now. Now we have to do the, the color inside the lines, we have to do that in order to give you, and that's what really the site plan would probably do, the traffic engineering report, the traffic report will do that. And, and so I, I, like I said, I would just urge you that even if we get to a point where we know what the program is going to be, but if we don't have everything perfectly exact, you know, I want 50 spaces, I want 32, I want 19, you know, I want 150, that we just doubt a little bit of our own infallibility and, and our own attempt at perfection, which I'm guilty of too, and, and do something here. It's, it's an opportunity, and let's not let it be an opportunity lost.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. LaPalusa, your vote?
Listen, I like the idea of the recreational space. Couple of questions that need to be more concrete for our next vote, whenever that will be, but I'm going to vote aye.
06 has been withdrawn. 07 is an ordinance amending and supplementing the revised general ordinances of the city of Bayonne, Chapter 33 Planning and Development Regulations, and Chapter 35 Zoning Regulations, and a resolution fixing Wednesday, June 12 at 6:00 PM in the Dorothy E. Harrington Council Chambers as a time and place for public hearing and final passage. It's moved by Mr. Perez. Ms. Weemer, will you second? Ms. Weemer?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Will you second? And on that resolution, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weemer?
Aye.
Mr. LaPalusa?
Aye.
08 is an ordinance amending and supplementing the revised general ordinances of the city of Bayonne, Chapter 33 Planning and Development Regulations, and a resolution fixing Wednesday, June 12 at 6:00 PM in the Dorothy E. Harrington Council Chambers as a time and place for public hearing and final passage, amending the short-term rentals. Who'd like to move it?
Move it.
Second.
On the resolution, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weemer?
Aye.
Mr. LaPalusa?
Aye.
09 is amending and supplementing the revised general ordinances of the city of Bayonne, Chapter 17 Property Maintenance, and a resolution moved by the Council President fixing Wednesday, June 12 at 6:00 PM in the Dorothy E. Harrington Council Chambers as a time and place for public hearing and final passage. Mr. Perez, will you second?
Second.
On the resolution, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weemer?
Aye.
Mr. LaPalusa?
Aye.
10 is amending and supplementing Chapter 33 Planning and Development Regulations, and a resolution moved by Councilmember Perez fixing Wednesday, June 12 and 6:00 PM in the Dorothy E. Harrington Council Chambers as a time and place for public hearing and final passage. Ms. Weemer, will you second?
Second.
On the resolution, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weemer?
Aye.
Mr. LaPalusa?
Aye.
11 is an ordinance to exceed the municipal budget appropriations limits and to establish a cap bank, and a resolution fixing Wednesday, June 12 at 6:00 PM in the Dorothy E. Harrington Council Chambers as a time and place for public hearing and final passage. Would you like to move it?
Some move.
And on the resolution, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weemer?
Aye.
Mr. LaPalusa?
Aye.
12 is amending and supplementing the revised general ordinances, Chapter 7 Traffic, and this actually has been withdrawn, forgot about that one. 13 is add five, so that it's not an ordinance, that's been removed. 14 is an ordinance amending and supplementing the revised general ordinances of the city of Bayonne, Chapter 7 Traffic, and a resolution fixing Wednesday, June 12 at 6:00 PM in the Dorothy E. Harrington Council Chambers as a time and place for public hearing and final passage. This is for restrictive parking zones, it's adding six and deleting two.
Move it.
And on that resolution, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weemer?
Aye.
Mr. LaPalusa?
Aye.
Consent Resolutions is a resolution moved by the council as a whole ordering the following communications to be received and filed. It covers C1 through C20. Any questions on the communications? And on the communications, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weemer?
Aye.
Mr. LaPalusa?
Aye.
Officers' Reports is a resolution moved by the council as a whole. It is a resolution ordering the following officers' reports to be received and filed, and any resolutions incorporated within to be adopted. It covers OR1 through OR2. Any questions on the officers' reports? On the officers' reports, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll? Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Carroll, aye.
Ms. Weemer?
Aye.
Mr. LaPalusa?
Aye.
We all sound about the same today. Consent Resolutions is a resolution moved, again, moved by the council as a whole ordering the resolutions be, ordering the following resolutions to be adopted. It covers CR1 through CR18. Any questions on the consent resolutions? And on the resolution, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weemer?
Aye.
Mr. LaPalusa?
Aye.
It's a point of order there, Madeline, CR14 was taken out, that was the one we moved to the front.
Okay. Thank you.
R1 is the introduction of the 2024 Local Municipal Budget and fixing Wednesday, June 12 at 6:00 PM in the Dorothy E. Harrington Council Chambers Municipal Building as a time and place for public hearing and final passage.
Move it.
Second.
And R, R1, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weemer?
Aye.
Mr. LaPalusa?
Aye.
R2 is authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with Visual Computer Solutions, doing business as, as jobs for Blue, for police extra-duty administration services for a period commencing March 1 through December 31, with a one, one-year option to renew at the city's sole discretion for a fee of eight percent payable from the proceeds paid to the city by the city's vendors pursuant to the fair and open process.
Some move.
Second.
And on that resolution, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weemer?
Aye.
Mr. LaPalusa?
Aye.
R3 is designating John and Mary Ann LLC as the redevelopers of the property located at 451-461 Avenue C, which is identified as Block 19, Lot 2.24.01, and authorizing the preparation of a redevelopment agreement.
Move it.
Second.
And on that resolution, Mr. Booker? And on that resolution, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. LaPalooza?
Aye.
Four is designating 361-373 Kennedy Boulevard, which is identified as Block 262, Lots 7, 8, and 9, as shown on the official tax map of the city, as a non-condemnation area in need of redevelopment and authorizing the planning board to prepare a redevelopment plan.
Some move.
Second.
And on that resolution, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. LaPalooza?
Aye.
Five is designating 33-37 East 18th Street, which is identified as Block 26, Lots 12, 13, and 14, as shown on the official tax map of the city, as a non-condemnation area in need of redevelopment and authorizing the planning board to prepare a redevelopment plan.
Move it.
Second.
And on that resolution, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. LaPalooza?
Aye.
R-6 is designating 102.5-116 Avenue E., which is identified as Block 467, Lots 10, 11, 12, 13, and 14, as shown on the official tax map of the city, as a non-condemnation area in need of redevelopment and authorizing the planning board to prepare a redevelopment plan.
Move it.
Second.
And on that resolution, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. LaPalooza?
Aye.
R-7 is a resolution authorizing the second revised and restated note with CJ Barbero LLC in connection with the loan given to CJ Barbero LLC by the Bayonne Economic and Opportunity Foundation, evidenced by a note dated August 31, 2012, which was sub... Wow, that's not coming out. Quently, thank you. It didn't want to come out. Subsequently revised and restated pursuant to the revised and restated note between the City of Bayonne Department of Community Development dated February 20, 2023 for the purpose of revising and restating the terms therein.
Move it.
Second.
And on that resolution, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Madeline, I just want to clarify. You read February 20, 2023, and February 20, 2013 is what is listed. I don't know if that's a script.
No, it's 2013.
It is. Aye.
And Mr. LaPalooza?
Aye.
R-8 authorizes the tax collector to prepare and mail estimated third-quarter taxes.
Some move. Second.
And on that resolution, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. LaPalooza?
Aye.
R-9 is awarding a contract to Raymond James and Associates, Inc. to serve as investment advisors to the City of Bayonne for a period of one year commencing March 16, 2024 through May 15, 2025 for an amount not to exceed $75,000 with a one-year possible option to renew at the sole discretion of the city.
Move it.
Second.
And on that resolution, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. LaPalooza?
I have one question. The renewal is the same amount of money?
On R-9?
R-9.
Yeah, it's an option for a one-year renewal. Is that the same amount?
I don't have option for one-year renewal. It would be in the same amount, though.
It would be the same amount.
We're talking R-9, right?
Yes.
How?
R-9.
R-9?
Yeah.
Awarding a contract to Raymond James?
Yeah, that's what we're on.
Yeah. Yeah, it would be under the same terms and conditions.
Okay. All right, and I'll vote aye.
R-10 is a resolution of the governing body's certification of the compliance with the United States Equal Employment Opportunity Commission's enforcement guidance of the consideration of arrest and conviction records in employment decisions under Title VII of the Civil Rights Act of 1964. And this one, I will actually need signatures on.
And we'll move it as a whole, Madeline.
R-10 is moved by the Council as a whole. And on R-10, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. LaPalooza?
Aye.
R-11 authorizing and providing for the issuance and sale of not to exceed $16,279,000 in bond anticipation notes of the City of Bayonne in the County of Hudson, New Jersey, to the Hudson County Improvement Authority and determining various matters in connection therewith.
Move it.
Second.
And on that one, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. LaPalooza?
Aye.
R-12 is awarding a contract for the 2024 Summer Camp Program Bus Services to Beloved Community Charter School for the bid price of $102,720.
Some move.
Second.
And on that resolution, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. LaPalooza?
Aye.
R-13 is designating Bayonne Energy Center Urban Renewal 3 LLC as the redeveloper for the portion of the property identified as Block 419, Lot 1, as shown on the official tax map of the city and authorizing the preparation and execution of a redevelopment agreement binding between the City of Bayonne and Bayonne Energy Center Urban Renewal 3 LLC.
Some move.
Second?
Second.
And on that resolution, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. LaPalooza?
Aye.
The space holder on your agenda has been removed. And we have a couple of add-ons. First one is authorizing the mayor and/or his designate and other appropriate city officials to take any and all actions and execute any and all documents necessary to effectuate the procurement of a Stage 1 Cultural Resource Survey in connection with the Cottage Street Park Flood Mitigation Project from Richard Grubb and Associates in an amount of $12,715, including expenses pursuant to its proposal dated January 29, 2024.
Move it. Second.
On that resolution, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. LaPalooza?
Aye.
At 2 is authorizing an agreement with Waterman LLC for professional engineering services as redevelopment and environmental program manager on behalf of the city for a period commencing May 16, 2024 through May 15, 2025 for an amount not to exceed $150,000.
Move it.
Second.
On that resolution, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. LaPalooza?
Aye.
R-3 is also authorizing an agreement with Waterman LLC for redevelopment and environmental program manager in connection with developers and redevelopers of the city for a period commencing May 16, 2024 through May 15, 2025 for an amount not to exceed $150,000.
Move it.
Second.
On that resolution, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. LaPalooza?
Aye.
At 4 is authorizing the purchasing agent to purchase and the installation of emergency lights, sirens, and computer equipment in four 2024 Ford Police Interceptors by Elite Vehicle Solutions under the New Jersey State Contract 17 Fleet 00749 for a total amount of $105,092.28.
Some move. Second.
And on that resolution, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. LaPalooza?
Aye.
Okay. The remaining add-ons are not on your agenda. At 5 is authorizing the execution of a Second Amendment to Agreement Number CY23085 with the Bayonne Family Community Center, increasing the same in the amount of $31,000 pursuant to the Addendum Number 3 of the contractor's proposal, making the total contract amount $86,000.
Some move. Second.
On that resolution, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. LaPalooza?
Aye.
At 6, authorizes the mayor and city clerk to enter into a license agreement with, from Educators to Innovators LLC at no cost to the city or from Educators to Innovators LLC to allow for the replacement of little free public libraries on the City of Bayonne property.
Second.
And then on that resolution, Mr. Booker? Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. LaPalooza?
Aye.
At 7 is authorizing the City of Bayonne to process an accidental involuntary disability retirement application.
Some move.